Call to order the October 5th quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council. And before we get started, I think it's important for me to at least recognize the rough few weeks we've had. We've had several hurricanes. We've had a tragedy in Las Vegas with a massacre. And so if you're religious, I would ask you to say a prayer. If you're not religious, that's okay. There are other ways you can help. There's organizations you can donate to. There's the Red Cross. There's North Carolina for Puerto Rico. There's all kinds of organizations. So I'm just asked you take a moment to think about how you can help in this time of need. And I would ask that you also join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved?
A second. And a second discussion. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to item three. It's a presentation of Cyber Security Awareness Month proclamation. Councilmember Bush will be presenting this proclamation to Technology Security Officer Larry Black.
Never been in the middle before. This is so exciting. Alright, it's that time of year. I know you guys are so excited. It's Cyber Security Awareness Month and yay. And I know that all of you are being super cyber aware at home. And it's really important, especially in this day and age, as many of you may have watched and seen, we've, we in the US, and actually globally, have been recently attacked by cyber ransomware. You may have seen it online where people actually stole your credentials and your information and then ransomed it. That's where the ransomware comes from, for you to have to pay money to get your stuff back. And a lot of that is because we just aren't very careful with our passwords. So if you do, and here's the time that I do this every year, if you've got your kid's name as a password, I feel like this should be one of those, you might be a redneck, but if your dog's name is your password, your cat's name, you know, it's some combination, yeah, it's some combination of your birthday, or your social security got to help you, or something like that. Now's the time for you to think about changing it to something that's more appropriate, something that includes capital letters, mixed case, maybe, you know, an ampersand, or an exclamation point, something that makes it a little bit harder for people to guess your password. Also, one other thing that I want to mention this year is increasingly older adults, of which none of us sitting here are, have been come the targets of online scams. Last year, more than 38% of US seniors said that somebody tried to scam them online. If you just think about it, 38% is a huge number. And especially with our growing population of seniors in Cary, it's just an opportunity for us to take a moment, make sure that the person calling you and asking you for money, or telling you that you've just been named in a will by a long-lost uncle, it's probably not that. So just be aware of those things that are happening. We have, seniors make up a pretty vulnerable sort of our population. They're not used to being presented to online, if you will. And it's, in part because of their, that greatest generation, it has a very trusting nature. And that's why we adore them so much. So, designating October 2017 as Cyber Security Awareness Month, whereas technology plays a vital role in our daily lives and in the future of our town, state, and nation, the internet provides us simple mechanisms for our citizens, schools, libraries, businesses, to perform a variety of tasks, like keeping in touch with our families and family and friends, managing our personal finances, performing research, enhancing our education, and conducting business. And additionally, businesses and service providers are increasingly reliant on information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response. And whereas internet users and our information infrastructure face an increasing threat of malicious cyber attack, loss of privacy from spyware and malware, and significant financial and personal privacy losses due to identity theft and fraud. And whereas town staff and officials understand that internet security is really our shared responsibility, in which everyone plays a critical role in keeping themselves safe. And raising awareness of cyberspace security, not only for our own Town of Cary employees, but also in our community, will help protect the town's information infrastructure and our citizens. And therefore, on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, I'm pleased to partner with the United States Department of Homeland Security, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, the National Association of State, CIOs, and the National Cybersecurity Alliance, of which I was once a member, and declare October as a National Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Cary. And I urge all Cary residents to learn more about cybersecurity, protect themselves online, and put that knowledge into practice in their homes, schools, workplaces, and businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for everything you do.
Very good. Alright, we'll now start the quasi judicial portion of this meeting. We are at the evidentiary, evidentiary hearing phase. Our one and only matter this evening is the First United Methodist Church expansion, 17 SU-001, which is in relation to 17 DP-1131. This case is before us tonight because the applicant has required, applicant requires a special use permit. As a reminder to those in attendance, even though we are in the council chambers, an evidentiary hearing is more like a court case. Council acts like the judge and can only accept evidence that is competent, material, and substantial. The North Carolina and United States constitutions give the applicant certain due process rights in an evidentiary hearing that council must comply with. The Constitution really ties our hands on what evidence we can accept. I apologize in advance for what might seem burdensome or complex. We will consider competent material, substantial evidence from anyone who testifies. By law, we can only accept the testimony from expert witnesses regarding whether this development will affect property values, whether it will increase traffic resulting from this development, or will pose a danger to public safety. To those that are with us this evening intending to testify, that are not qualified as experts, we can accept your testimony, we can accept testimony from you on factual issues and what you have observed. Our contractual attorney, who's sitting to my left, will help us determine who is an expert and who is not, and what evidence we may consider. The hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak at this hearing must be administered an oath by our town clerk, Mrs. Johnson, who is to my right. And at this time, we're going to pause just a moment to allow those individuals who'd like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And council will refrain from taking any other action until that has been completed. At this time, I'll ask council members if they've had any site visits, expertise, communication, financial relationship, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mayor Protem Yurha.
I have not.
Ms. Bush?
I have not.
Ms. France?
I would be lying if I said I don't have any specialized knowledge of this church, given that it's in downtown Cary. Drive by it probably four times a day, been there numerous times for weddings and so forth, but nothing regarding this particular case.
And will it impact your?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Same as Ms. France, I actually grew up in that church, but will not impact my vote in any way. Mr. Smith, Ms. Robinson?
Same as you, Ms. France, I've been there. It won't impact my judgment tonight.
Okay. So based on the disclosures you've heard from council members, at this time, I would invite anyone to the podium that believes or has an objection to council members' participation in this hearing. Seeing no one will continue, and I'll open the quasi judicial hearing, and Desmond Corley of our staff will introduce the side up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. This case is a special use request for an expansion of First United Methodist Church. This special use request also requires that this council approve a site plan or the associated development plan. The total acreage of the subject property is 2.16 acres, and as we know, it's in the middle of downtown Cary. As I said before, this project, or this property is in the heart of downtown Cary, a block south of Chatham Street, and a couple of blocks north of the new downtown Cary Park. The zoning for this part of town is all, or for the most part, TC, which is Town Center. The reason that this case is before you tonight is the sub-district, the zoning sub-district, HMXD, High Intensity Mixed Use, requires religious assemblies to obtain special use approval when they are created or expanded. So just a little background on the First United Methodist Church. It's been around since at least 1871. In 1933, that kind of landmark log cabin was constructed. It's still there on the corner of Waldo Street and South Walker Street. The most recent improvements related to this property were in 2007, with a parking expansion on the southern side of Waldo Street. So right now, I'm showing you the four major streets around the church. It actually doesn't front on East Chatham Street, but that's a major street nearby. The proposed addition is supposed to be constructed on the east side, and that would be to the right of your screen of the existing building, where now you see a playground and covered by the trees is a gravel parking lot. The proposed addition would take up most of that area with a building and a lawn. This is the proposed layout that's under review right now. I have highlighted the major components of this proposal, which are the building addition, highlighted in purple, and the sidewalk improvements, which are highlighted in red. They're going to make improvements to their entire frontage on Waldo Street, so that it matches the sidewalk across the street with brick pavers. The log cabin, I think you might be able to see it, it's kind of light on the screen, is not going anywhere. That will still be there. The proposed addition is two stories, and totals 17,500 square feet. These are the conceptual elevations that were submitted with the development plan. The materials, features are consistent with the existing church. The top elevation is looking westward from Walker Street, and the lower elevation is looking northward from Waldo Street. Before I introduce the applicant's representative, I just want to make the council aware that at the time, the staff report was finalized, we did not have any information from the applicant regarding the fourth special use criteria, which is, which speaks to effects to adjacent property values. They gave us some information between the time we finalized the staff report and tonight, that should have been included as an attachment with your packets. And I believe the clerk has a copy if you need one. At this time, I will introduce Jason Barron, who's representing the applicant.
Well, Mr. Barron, it's coming up. I do want to ask council members if you have not received the attachment he referred to and have not seen it.
I've been traveling today, so I have not seen it.
I haven't seen it.
I do have a question. That white rectangle, is that a playground space?
Yes, that is the playground. I apologize.
Okay. Alright, I was just trying to understand what I was saying. Okay, thank you.
We'll make sure you get them. Anyone else?
Thank you, Desmond. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Barron with Morning Star Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant, First United Methodist Church. As Desmond has done a great job of doing, introducing the case, describing the nature of the expansion and why this requires a special use from you all. I believe what you will hear tonight is that this request satisfies the evidentiary requirements for approval of the special use, as well as of the development plan. And I'm going to keep my remarks short. You will hear from Mr. Roy Lorenzen from Stewart Engineering, that's the engineering firm that's prepared the plans before you, Mr. Josh Ranky from Ramey Kemp, who's performed traffic study with respect to this expansion, and also Mr. Curtis Westbrook. Couple of bookkeeping items. One, really not evidentiary, but I, we received, and I don't know if the council received, but we received copies of notarized letters of support that I will just hand to the clerk, not necessarily as evidence so much, but there are copies of letters from the owner of the perfect piece, as well as from Creco Properties. So I'll hand those to the clerk.
Normally affidavits are not acceptable, since the witnesses are not here to be cross-examined.
Right. And again, not submitting them as evidence, other than the fact that we received them. So not submitting them for, to prove the matters asserted therein. The second matter of bookkeeping is unfortunately, Mr. Gustafson, who performed our appraiser's report, had a conflict arise and could not be here tonight. I believe you all have received a copy of his report. Mr. Westbrook is here and can answer questions to the extent you all have questions about impact on property values. But we would prefer to proceed, and if there are questions that arise that require additional information or supplemental information, we can deal with those as they come up. So with that, I will turn it over to our first, first witness, and that's Mr. Roy Lorenzen from Stewart Engineering, who will run through the plan and the evidentiary requirements associated with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just go over a little bit, personal information. I'm a 1985 graduate at Clemson University. Don't hold that against me. My daughter went to state. Maybe she got smarter, I don't know. But, so basically, I've been in Cary, North Carolina, for 32 years. And I've been practicing as a licensed engineer for 28, licensed in three states, including North Carolina. And my professional role at Stewart Engineering is basically the senior project manager. I actually started up the land development department. Concerning the role on the team for this application, again, I'm the senior project manager. I was basically overseeing the design for the project. And I'm here to discuss the overall design of that project. Concerning the approval criteria and compliance with the LDO, over the past several months, we have been working closely with the town staff to develop the site plan you see before you. With their assistance, the site plan has been designed in compliance with the development and design standards of Chapters 7 and 8 of the LDO, as well as all other provisions of the LDO and other adopted plans. Concerning the protection of other property, the plans for the expansion are not anticipated to have adverse impacts on other properties. This expansion will enable the church to provide more services at its current facility, but is not intended to add new members. Concerning the harmony and unity, the expansion also has been designed in a manner that is harmonious with the built environment. The design matches the character of the existing building, and will blend seamlessly. Is appropriate, it is the appropriate bulk and scale to complement the church, which has been in place for many years. There can be no doubt that the use is harmonious with the area. The church was one of the first institutions in downtown Cary, and much of the area developed around the church. Thus, the use has existed in harmony with this area for longer than most of us have lived here. Concerning the safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists, it's my professional opinion that this plan for the expansion provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists, and prevent a dangerous arrangement of their travel ways. Concerning emergency and other services, the plan also has been designed so as not to interfere with the ability of emergency personnel or other service providers to enter the site. The site is easily accessible from Waldo and Walker Streets. The manner in which the site will handle stormwater, sewer, and other utilities largely remains the same. Existing utilities will be extended to serve the expansion. Moreover, it has been determined that there is adequate capacity to serve this expansion. In this way, the development plan does not endanger public health or safety. In conclusion, therefore, it is my professional opinion that the proposed plan complies with the applicable requirements of the LDO and other adopted plans. I also believe that the plan adequately protects other property from potential adverse effects, and is harmonious with the development of the nearby properties. Finally, I find that the plan provides safe conditions for the pedestrians and motorists, and provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site. If there are no questions at this time, I would like to invite Josh Ranky, our traffic engineer, to speak more about the project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. We appreciate your time tonight. I am Josh Ranky, registered professional engineer in the state of North Carolina with over 15 years' experience. I'm a traffic manager at Ramey Kemp and Associates on this project. I did the traffic aspect. So we did a trip generation, a queuing study, and we're currently working on a traffic management plan, which will be submitted. So I'll kind of briefly go through sort of the right-of-way around the site, the traffic management plan that we'll be working on, the queuing study, and sort of the parking aspects of this. So it is bounded currently on three sides by public rights-of-way. One thing to note with this supplemental requirements for this type of use, it does have to have frontage on a thoroughfare or collector. Academy Street is a thoroughfare, so the plans meet that criteria. We did do a trip generation letter, as well as a queuing study already. The queuing study was done on a typical day, with the, kind of observing the patterns for dropping off students. It was maintained within the parking. 100% of what we observed was parents that would park and then walk their students in. They were not actually stopping in the, in the street itself. In terms of the traffic management plan, that's something we're currently working on. We're coordinating with the staff. It will be submitted as part of the development plan review. In terms of the parking, that is something where the church owns the adjacent parking lots to the south there. We saw during the queue, when we were doing the queuing observations to see if there were any queuing issues, that a lot of times, they were parking in angled parking along Waldo, or they would park in the parking lot and walk the students across at the crosswalk there. So in terms of the queuing, really, all we were seeing was an occasional car that would stop for parents to walk across the crosswalk. So it is our understanding that the site does have adequate parking to meet the LDO requirements. Thus, it is my professional opinion that the proposed plan before you today provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project, and does not otherwise create undue congestion or a traffic hazard. And I'll turn it over to Curtis Westbrook, unless if you have any questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Weinbrack, member of the Town Council. My name is William Curtis Westbrook, Senior. Next month, I will celebrate 48 years in various aspects of real estate sales and management and development in Cary. I've also been involved with the church since 1970, serving in many positions, the most recent being Chair of the Building Committee. The church is very excited about this opportunity. Process began nearly three years ago with a long-range planning study group, and then a 10-member committee was appointed, and more than 100 members from our church became very seriously involved. First United Methodist Church has been in its current location, as has been mentioned, continuously since 1871. We may be the oldest tenant of land in the downtown area. We believe that our presence enhances the community, and downtown in particular, as we fulfill our mission of sharing the heart of Christ from the heart of Cary. Our 4,000-plus congregation is proud to be part of the redevelopment of downtown. And in any given week, more than 6,700 people are drawn to downtown, businesses are drawn to downtown to our church for various programs and ministries. Many support the downtown businesses and activities sponsored by Cary, and we're pleased to welcome others' downtown activities by sharing our parking lot. Our new youth and community center will help us to serve our current members and to make a better connection with the community. We would very much appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation in chief. Would ask the council to take judicial notice of the contents of the land development ordinance and the town's other adopted plans. And we are here to ask, to answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Ms. Barron. At this time, I'll invite speakers who've been sworn in and wish to speak in support of the application to the podium. Anyone else to speak in support? Okay, we'll move on. Does any party wish to cross-examine witnesses who've already testified in support of their request? Nope. Alright, now we'll open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. As a reminder to those testifying, please limit your testimony to facts that you know. An applicant's representative does have a right to object to your testimony while you're speaking. They have the right to do that. Our contractual attorney sitting beside me will help council to determine what evidence we may consider. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing no one will continue. And now, call on staff to provide professional observations about the requests.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. There were a number of observations the staff made related to the approval criteria for special uses and, and the development plan. Those are in the staff report, but I just wanted to highlight a few of them here, because that's a long list of observations. The religious assembly use, which we have said has been around since the 1800s, the use is not proposed to be changed. I have shown the proposed elevations, which demonstrate that the architectural materials and features and characteristics are compatible with the existing church and the surrounding area. This proposed development does include sidewalk improvements to Waldo Street. They are also dedicating right-of-way for a town-initiated sidewalk project on South Walker Street, which is to the east of the site. Ramey Kemp was giving observations with regard to traffic that's tied to enrollment at a daycare. There is no proposed increase to enrollment at the daycare, so no increases to trips are expected. The LDO does not been approved by the Development Review Committee yet or by the town yet, the ones that do remain open do not affect the layout of the site. So, everything that you see on the layout should be the same. Just want to remind counsel again that tonight, you're being asked to do two things. The first is to approve a special use for the expansion of the religious assembly at First United Methodist Church, and then the second is to approve the associated development And I have provided the special use approval criteria here for your reference. The development plan approval criteria are also here. I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Ms. Barron, any need to cross-examine? All right. Either party believe new evidence been presented to continue this hearing? Nope. All right. We'll now begin the deliberative phase of the hearing, and I open it up to council members who may have comments or questions. Yes?
Would normally, if we had not planned the sidewalk already, would normally this have been part of the development plan, that the sidewalk would have to have been built to our standards?
You're talking about on Walker Street?
Yes, where they marked the corner, yeah, on Walker.
That's typically the case, a sidewalk. If you front on the right-of-way where sidewalk is required, you would be expected to.
And is it because we've already proposed it that it's, they're not asking for an exception from doing that?
I think we've already funded it, right?
We funded it, but we haven't...
Yes, we've already funded it. We've already paid...
So, we don't have to ask for...
Right.
All right. All right, it looks like that because they're actually improving part of it as well already, because it looks like they're making the corner. Is the red part being done? The part you highlighted in red, which goes up through the corner?
Yeah, that is a part of their proposed disturbed area, the dash line. Well, you can see, is there area of disturbance?
Okay. That helps. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
In point number two, you say it has no adverse impacts on its neighbors. Do we, have you all vetted the stormwater issue and looked into that to make sure that this doesn't exacerbate the stormwater issue in the downtown area?
I cannot speak specifically to that. I don't know if anyone's here.
I'm getting a nod, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments?
I'd be happy to make a motion when the time's right.
We're almost there. Any other comments? If not, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and open it up to counsel on a motion for special use permit.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the request for special use made by the applicant, as the request meets all of the approval criteria of Section 3.8.3 of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following, that the resolution and permit approved for this special use request shall be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds upon the expiration of the appeal period. The approval of this special use is conditioned on the subsequent approval of a development plan, and that this approval will terminate if the applicant or owner has failed to make substantial progress on the approved development plan within two years after the date of approval of the resolution, or has failed to complete the development plan within five years after the date of approval of the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Ms. France, you want to do the development?
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2i of the LDO. And this approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining Development Review Committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'm ready to close the public hearing.
Yes.
It is. All right. We'll close the public hearing. There's nothing else on our agenda this evening, so is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Watch state games.[1738.82]